...try to make learning fun. That was my goal, to have a good time, right Trish?
Oh, that's right.
And one of the ways that I did it was with poetry, silly songs, things like that. And one of the best, best guys that I introduced my children to was Shel Silverstein. Anybody in the audience remember Shel Silverstein? We liked him a lot because he was funny. There was a song that Johnny Cash made famous called "Boy Named Sue." Remember that? Shel Silverstein wrote that song, okay? And he also wrote a great book called "The Giving Tree," and I loved reading that to my children. But today I'm going to read to you a poem by Shel Silverstein called "Sick." Okay? Hang on. "Sick" by Shel Silverstein. "I cannot go to school today, so little Peggy Anne McKay. I have the measles and the mumps, the gash rush and herpes bumps. My mouth is wet, my throat is dry, I'm going blind in my right eye. My tonsils are as big as rocks, I've counted sixteen chicken pox. And there's one more that's seventeen, and don't you think my face looks green? My leg is cut, my eyes are blue, it might be instamatic flu. I cough and sneeze and gasp and choke, I'm sure that my left leg is broke. My hip hurts when I move my chin, my belly button's caving in. My back is rich, my ankle's strained, my appendix pains each time it rains. My nose is cold, my toes are numb, I have a sliver in my thumb. My neck is stiff, my voice is weak, I hardly whisper when I speak. My tongue is filling up my mouth, I think my hair is falling out. My elbow's bent, my spine ain't straight, my temperature is 108. My brain is struck, I cannot hear. There is a hole inside my ear. And I have a hangnail, and my heart is... What? What's that? What's that you say? You say today is Saturday? Goodbye, I'm going out to play." (Applause). How's school? It's fun for everybody today.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of Canada. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In the U.S. Constitution.
Next we're going to adopt the agenda as recommended by the superintendent. However, there's a change on number nine, regular meeting. We're taking the education services off of the agenda this time. So if you'll take and scratch it off.
Can I?
Yes. Okay. And would someone give a motion for the adoption of the change?
Move approval of the agenda with the change of nine B.
Second.
Mr. Kennedy has moved Mrs. Council to adopt the agendas recommended by the superintendent with the change that was just made. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carries five, zero. Okay. In a moment, while we'll have some comments, a first group, so, because I think Bruce, you're going to come up and introduce yourself, and I think three people or four people you have with you.
Okay.
Someone to come on up.
All of us, or just myself? I don't need to use you.
Whichever each is, whichever goes first.
Except your own self.
(Inaudible).
Yeah. I thank you so kindly. I'm Bruce Bryn. I live at 138 Daisy Street, Homosassa, Florida, in the heart of Chiltenham, Illinois. And I know each one of you. And I've now met Ginger for the first time, and she is counted amongst my good friends. I have become the chairman of the Republican Liberty Caucus, and that is the action arm of the Republican Party. We're in all the states of the Union, the largest state is Florida. We have over 1,600 members in Florida now. And what we do, we work with school boards, B O C C meetings, legislation, the police department, and so forth. And we're here to support you, not to cause any problems. We are not subservient to the RPOF, which is the Republican Party of Florida. We're not subservient to the REC, the Republican Executive Committee of Citrus County, because we stand alone, and that was done back in 1991. So it's all very exciting. And it's so great to see Tom Kennedy again. I first met him when he was on his first election tour 12 years ago. And Sandy, I'm with Sandy once a month at one of the Republican meetings, which is great. And I'm glad to see that you're all such great conservatives. And you too, Doug. And don't forget to come to our meeting, Doug. So we are here for liberty and freedom, that nothing ever is taken away from us by legislation or by actions of any committees or local government. And I understand how conservative you are, and I had no idea that the books are available for everybody to see. I found that out from Tom today. So anything is just absolutely great. I think we're going to be great, great friends. And Linda, you have a letter that you wrote to a legislator that if the secretary would make me two copies, please. We'll get that put out. And our regular meetings are the third Tuesday of every month at Fish Tales Restaurant in Homosassa. And we meet at 6:30, the meeting starts, and we go there at 5:30 to chat and have meals. It's a pleasure to meet you, and we'll have members of our caucus in all your meetings kind of taking notes and stuff, okay? Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hill?
(Inaudible).
Ms. Hill?
First of all, I'd like to say to Ms. Smith, who just goes in, I'm excited you made it through the first day of school. With the smile on too. I've got a special pen to hand out today because one of our board members has reached a milestone. And I just want to tell you all a little story that on the way to school or work this morning, I followed a bus in. And you know how we all love all those buses back on the road on the first day, and I started getting phone calls. But two little kids were sitting in the back of the bus, and they turned around and saw me. They didn't know me, but they had the biggest grins on their faces, and they started waving, and I thought, they are deciding to be back in school today. So I was happy. I almost brought a tear to my eye, thinking how exciting. But what I wanted to say too is that what an awesome responsibility that I have, that you all have, for the safety and the welfare of all our kids. And I know where your hearts are, and I thank you for the job that you do every single day to make sure that we put the right things in place. But with that being said, Mr. Kennedy, would you come forward, please? I didn't make yourself be this thrilled.
Grandfather Kennedy.
Will my dad please come forward? On behalf of the school district, Mr. Kennedy has reached his 10-year mark of service of Citrus County Schools, and I wanted to be able to present to you today your 10-year pen and say thank you so much.
Thank you.
(Applause). Thank you. Congratulations. Thanks very much, Ms. Hill. I'm going to read something that applies to people who come and speak to the board, not you all, but some people maybe who have never been here, and this is a statement that we make to everyone. Each listed speaker will be allowed three minutes to make a presentation. Speakers are asked to address the issue of handling and refraining from using obscenities, vulgarities, or other breaches of respect, and refraining from words of statements from their usual construction and common acceptance, or construed as insults intended inside violence of preaching of the peace. We ask that you model the following character traits: cooperation, responsibility, citizenship, kindness, respect, honesty, self-control, and tolerance. The school board will not discuss or take any official action upon any presentation. Any persons present who wish to speak must be allotted green card, which are located in the back of the room. And then I'll call the speaker, one by one, whoever wants to come. That's just a general statement of how we conduct ourselves. And everything was so up and positive, and now I have to read this, so I apologize. Next, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Mr. Dodd has moved to approve the consent agenda. Mrs. Bryant is second with the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carries five, zero. Thank you. And now we have a regular edition of donations.
Approve the $1,500 donation to LaCanto Middle School from Eddie N. Barbara Duncan. Approve the $5,000, $500 donation to LaCanto Middle School from Meek Real Estate Sales. Approve the $500 donation to LaCanto Middle School from B.C. Medical Enterprises. Approve the $500 donation to Citrus High School from M.F.B. Incorporated, Hub Jones. Approve the $5,000 donation to Crystal River High School from Arnold &amp; Diane Ross Fund. Approve the $3,000 donation to LaCanto High School from Forensic Sciences Foundation. Approve the $500 donation to LaCanto High School from the Veterans of Foreign Wars, Harry F. Nesbit, Post 10087. Approve the donation of books valued at $5,808.20 to the K-5 students in Citrus County Schools, elementary and primary schools, and Crest from the Roadbury Pub of Citrus County. And approve the $525 donation to Marine Science Station from the City of Crystal River. That is a total of $17,833.20 in donations.
(Applause). There was something in the Chronicle, I guess it was last week, and it was talking about how this community is a giving community, and every time something comes up, people step up to the plate and they give, they donate. So we are very appreciative. Thank you. Next, we have School Support Services, Suta Swain and Johnny Bishop.
Good afternoon. I ask the board's approval of the instructional and support recommendations as listed on the Goldenrod.
Would you like to move approval?
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Bryant, set by Mr. Kennedy to approve the Goldenrod Instruction and Support Recommendations. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carries five, zero. Thank you.
I would also like to recognize Mr. Gaskins, Bruce Gaskins, if you will stand up. We would like to recognize him. He has been appointed as Supervisor of Transportation with an effective date of August 11, 2021. So congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
I've got a question for Mr. Gaskins. It's good to see you with a tie on. Is that, is your new job going to require that tie all the time? Or? Only at board meetings.
It was nice driving over from Homosassa over Grove, Cleveland 44, and seeing all those little yellow school buses on the road, which will get a smile. I told them, they had a good day. Thanks to the bus drivers. Next, Ms. Kirby and Mr. Keever.
I'm going to go ahead and make the motion that we approve the purchase of the Windsor Learning Sunday System Intervention Program.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Kennedy, set by Mrs. Council, to approve the purchase of the Windsor Learning Sunday System Intervention Program. Do you have something you'd like to add?
Well, of course, I apologize for not being here when you're talking about this. I do have an apology for that. But we are very interested in this program, and we're very excited about the possibility of getting this for our students. The Windsor Learning Program is one that is based on Orton-Gillingham structures and standards. It was written by Arlene Sunday, who is one of the first presidents of the Academy of Orton-Gillingham Practitioners. And so she's very well-versed in the Orton-Gillingham strategies, and she has embedded those into this program. So basically, in a nutshell, it's a direct, face-to-face instruction where teachers can use either paper, paper or digital formats to be able to provide reading interventions for students. And we're proposing that we're going to use this with our ESE teachers as an intervention, and then see where it goes from there. It is a program we've been looking at for about six years, and this is our first opportunity to actually be able to use it and buy it. It's the sort of program that will be very beneficial because it's a multisensory program to help our struggling readers, but it's good for any reader. So it's not going to hurt any kids, is basically what I'm going to say. So some things I can tell you specifically about it, that the program has, again, its direct instruction, and it starts off with like 10-minute lessons for little guys and builds up to a maximum of a 35-minute lesson. So it's pretty perfect for an intervention block. It could be used within a 90-minute reading block, for example, in a young elementary classroom, in a rotation, or it could be used as a pull-up. So there's some versatility in that. There basically are three levels. There is a pre-reading level. It's called Let's Play Learn, and it's for those pre-kindergarten, early kindergarten skills. It has manipulatives within the system, and it teaches pre-reading and pre-numeracy. So it also hits the math standards for children to be able to understand those basics. Then the second one is what they call, it's their foundation, it's Sunday System One, and it's the beginning reading. And it's pretty much from beginning reading to second grade. And it's basically, this is structured systematic multisensory reading intervention. It teaches things, the older reading, pre-reading skills, phonics using vowels, vowel blends, vowel pairs, consonants, reading, writing fluency, handwriting, vocabulary comprehension. So it really hits on the big five, and makes sure that they're all incorporated into the intervention program.
And the last.
And then the last one is Sunday System Two, and that is for grades three and up. So we're purchasing, excuse me, for use with students in the third through eighth grade as needed. And again, that's another review of concepts, but then it gets into syllable types and division, prefixes, suffixes, roots, non-phonetic words, again, vocabulary and comprehension. So that kids will have the basic instruction and have the foundation that they need to be successful. So right now, we're proposing to purchase basically one of each of these sets for each of our elementary schools, and then the System One and System Two for our middle schools and for Crest. And again, we're just talking about one teacher at each of the schools. So this isn't something we're putting in regular classes, but again, it would be primarily for ESE teachers to use to help support our students.
And how are they going to monitor the progress?
The progress will be monitored. It has progress monitoring built into the system, and then, of course, they would also be part of our regular progress monitoring. So are I ready, systems, and stuff that we already have in place. So they'll be able to contain what they do.
Go up and down too. If someone doesn't know something, go down and relearn it.
100%. And that's what we feel like we've been missing, is a good, direct, face-to-face, solid phonics program to help our kids who are struggling readers.
The dual delivery, can you explain that?
Sure. So basically, this is an option that we have proposed to purchase. So we're going to automatically get the paper, but then we're also asking to purchase it by digital means. Our thought with that is that we might be able to send those digital means home with the student, especially in a year like this, where students, they kind of come and go, depending on if they're quarantined or not, and they will be able to continue their work. So if we get to where we don't feel comfortable with having paper in everybody's hand, a student will be able to have that on their iPad and be able to use those materials.
And this money is a set, this is not an annual fee program, this is probably a set.
No, right now, we would be buying a set. It's an opportunity for us to buy these paper-based materials. There can be some recurring costs in, for example, some workbooks that come with the system. We could have some costs there. And then we could also have a recurring cost if we decide to renew the digital. But those would be things that we would come to you at a future date. It's really, we're piloting it, and we're trying to see if this is going to meet the needs of this particular group of students.
Ms. Bryant? Yeah, I was wondering, how did the students transition, say, from printed page to the computer? Is it a fairly easy transition?
I know that typically we build in those supports for students to be able to have that transition, but until we've piloted it, I can't guarantee that that would be the case. But that would be our expectation.
I was hearing something that sometimes some students have a little difficulty. They either, depending on the computer, they like that best, they don't need to do it through, or vice versa, you know? They develop a desire for one of the other.
Oh, absolutely, as we all do. We all have our preferences on whether we want to read on a Kindle or read a hardback book. But what we want is students who are versatile, who can go back and forth, because there are going to be times in their life that they have to read one way or the other, and they have to be successful in being able to do that.
Yeah, no, but as soon as you're done. And I think those are great points, Ms. Powers. One of the things that I, again, love is that it's a one-on-one learning.
Well, it's one on a small group.
One on a small group, I'm sorry, as opposed to a whole group type of curriculum. I've been extremely excited that you're bringing the Orton-Gillingham multisensory learning to the district. I know we've had some examples of that. We've had some schools that have used some of it, but as a person of dyslexia, this, who actually was involved in the research of this, some of the piloting research when I was in elementary school, the Orton-Gillingham is considered the gold standard for dyslexia, for many other SLDs, because of its phonemic awareness, because of the phonics learning, which we all know has been successful again in many learning challenge students. Many times, parents have been asking us for this very type of learning system. And what I somewhat was shocked over is typically, Orton-Gillingham systems are quite expensive. They almost are out of range expensive for a public school system. And you got a tremendous deal at a time when we had those ESTR monies from the state, which we are grateful for, because it might have been harder to do this in another year, but thank you for that. Again, usually, Orton-Gillingham is out of reach. Is that unique to this company?
I think that this company, from all the research that I have done, is determined to make it cost-effective so that it can get to more students. I think the Orton-Gillingham standard is there, and it's effective, and it does great. It really, there's something to it. It really does make a difference in the lives of kids. But you're right, primarily, it's a one-on-one intervention, and it's extremely expensive and takes years of training for someone to become Orton-Gillingham certified. What they wanted to do at Windsor Learning and working with Arlene Sunday was to set up a program that would be a direct instruction program. So if you think back to like even almost a reading mastery, do this, say this, that's the sort of program that this is, and then it's responsive to students' needs. By having it be, our practitioners don't have to be as, have such professional development, because in all seriousness, the Orton-Gillingham is years of professional development to become Orton-Gillingham certified. Where in this case, they're going to be trained for just a couple of days throughout the school year to be able to make this happen.
Thank you.
I just want to say what a good job they did from Tom Kennedy.
Thank you.
And you, I was really glad that I was talking about it.
Yeah.
So.
Definitely.
One of Thomas's favorite programs, and that simply seems like it just is right there without it.
We need to recognize Mrs. Kirby because she's always looking out for her students.
Yes, thank you.
Always. Ways to help our students, and that's what it's about. Thank you. And do you have any other questions that I could possibly answer on this one?
I was just thinking, you know, years ago, or many years ago, I can't remember how many, we went to that sight word way of teaching, which was, I cannot believe anyone believed that. But it's where you had to learn all the words by sight. So if your vocabulary consisted of 1,000 words or 1,000 different words, and you learned them all by sight, it made no sense. But now we're back to the phonics, which makes sense. And so.
And we know that it can't be in just isolation. You can't just teach phonics. We need to teach about, teach about the world around us, so there has to be meaning in bringing meaning to reading. And that's one of the things that I liked about this program. It did emphasize the vocabulary and the comprehension throughout the lessons.
Let me tell you, our ESE department is on the ball, always shower, always two steps ahead.
We have a wonderful team.
You do, yes.
For us. Thank you for all your support for everything that we endeavor to do to help our kids.
Thank you. And now we can take a vote, because we've got a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carries five, zero. Thank you.
(Inaudible).
Yeah, information on.
Good evening. So I brought to you the cash investment report, which is where we stood at the end of our fiscal year, June 3 of 2021. So as you can see, our interest rates still not going past 1%, but they're getting a little better. July did see a little bit of improvement on our interest rates, and, you know, our cash starts to get a little lower, starting in July and August, and then September, October, it gets pretty lean, and then November, we'll start getting those tax dollars, and so those will start increasing, and hopefully, our interest rates will improve by then. There is the final budget amendment for the fiscal year will come next meeting, right before we do the AFR, because we're trying to get the comprehensive, final, complete budget revision to the board. And the final financial statement is our annual financial report, which we will be bringing to you, and we will vote on at the next meeting, which is September 7. I'm just reminding you, because it has to be approved before the 11th, or actually, it's the 13th, I think, because the 11th is on a Saturday. So we just moved it up. We did that back when we presented the budget calendar to you. So I'm just reminding you, it is the first Monday, and there's no plan to have another meeting on the second Tuesday, so just to keep you aware of that. At this time, we're working on the budget, you know? We presented it to you last time, so we're putting that into place, and we are working on finalizing the expenditures, working a lot on the ESTR funds, the CARES, and the CERSA funds, and, you know, making sure we've spent them the way that they can, getting them prepared to submit those to the state. They're due this week for the ESTR II funds. That's all due on Thursday, so that's where we're at with that. Are there any questions? We do, the operational audit is up in Tallahassee. We're waiting for a response on that, and hopefully, we'll get a little reprieve in the financial audit. They've done a little bit of background work, and they've sent a couple emails, but they shouldn't be live on site till hopefully after October, and we've submitted to you and gotten our work done, so they'll be back. Any other questions at this time? All right, thank you. You all have a good evening.
Thank you.
And Tammy, that was also through the budget update, right?
Yes, that's the budget of the whole thing.
Now we have the attorney, the committee members. Where do you go? There he is.
Nothing I got this time. Hopefully, nothing. Cut on.
Okay. Next, to approve the minutes of July 13, 2021 administrative hearing, regular meeting and public hearing. With approval?
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Bryant, set by Mr. Kennedy, to approve the minutes of July 13, 2021 administrative hearing, regular meeting and public hearing. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carries five, zero. Thank you. Any citizen comments other than one? We have only one addition.
I have another one. I can speak louder enough. I have to come up.
You do have to come up, so we can get it on the record.
Our group was just at the B O C C meeting, and they had a great discussion about the CARES monies that was coming in and how they were going to distribute it. They were holding out for one area, and they finally approved it after about a 25-minute discussion. Could I ask how much was the CARES amount, and has it been distributed to the school board?
Ms. Wilson?
(Inaudible).
Yeah.
Total for a whole, yeah, 20 minutes, I'll look it all up off the top of my head.
For those of you that have been at B O C C meetings, and I've done them for years, this is really relaxation, coming to this place.
Our meetings are a conflict with B O C C.
Yes.
Same day, different times, but not enough different.
Last year, we got across this. Last year, we got across six million. This, this year, we're now, we're looking at about 15 million.
Okay, received six million, and this year, 15 million.
Sorry, last year, we're just finishing last year.
And what have you received this year?
In 2020.
In 2020.
We just started, we reported about 15 million.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments? Any business needs to come before the board?
Just looking forward to hearing the good reports for the first week of school, our teachers and our kids.
Scars and kids excited, very excited. And that fact that it was always said that, well, it's kind of school bus, and I thought, my gosh, I guess I'm set off and fly, just how the energy that's in there is really good. Thomas?
I've heard encouraging things about the start of the school year, talked to some administrators, quite a few administrators, and the excitement is just building, and that makes me very happy, because the emotional and social well-being of our students is certainly paramount on all of our minds, especially after this last year. I will tell you, I had a chance to, again, Mr. Walker, Harold Walker and I, from the Citrus Construction Academy, had a chance to meet, and we've been talking about some of the things they're doing. I would really love if the board is open to it, maybe on a workshop day, of inviting him to bring the bus, and then maybe we could park it outside, and we could all, you know, take a, you know, trip to here. I mean, not, we don't have to go anywhere, but just so we could see it. I think it's a remarkable thing they're doing. He's working with, you know, some of our teachers, with Miss Stanley, and I'm excited about those vocational career and technical programs that we're continuing to expand on. I want to also just, you know, there was a lot of rulings last week from the Department of Education and the Department of Health, but I will say that a lot of us have probably overlooked that I truly appreciate the governor instructing the Department of Education to look at the pupil attendance records, emergency policy they did. This is policy 6A E R 21-01, and this really just allows us to ensure that if our students do find themselves quarantined by a directive of the Department of Health, that they can continue their schooling, and that it won't be counted against them for their attendance, and that they can continue to do their work at home and be counted as being in school. That was important. The Department of Education recognized that that could have been a challenge for us in our districts, and so that really is helping us with our tracking, with our policies going forward. I also wanted to share that the, just an update on the Florida School Board Association, as president-elect of that state organization, we've got some work we're doing, holding the National Association to their feet on some issues. You know, we have been a very conservative group in Florida, and we truly believe that we want to keep the decisions and the work that they're doing, really careful in the decisions they're doing, much like Ms. Powers has talked about on this board, we want to not have overreaching. And so we've been working with the National delegation to challenge them on some issues. We're going to continue to do that, and I'm proud that Florida has made it clear that we want to stay in a more conservative approach as we're moving forward. We do believe that it's important to have a national voice, but we also want that voice to be consistent with the Florida School Board Associations and the needs of Florida as they've retained, so I'm excited about that work. And Superintendent, I just wanted to maybe ask either you or if somebody has an opportunity. I know today was the first day that we had House Bill 529, which is our moment of silence take place. I unfortunately was not able to get to one of the schools when I wanted to today, to do, to watch that, but I'm assuming we did, we had that taking place, and we're all very appreciative of the work that you and staff has done with that. So I think that is my notes for this year. Thank you.
Do you have something to add?
Yes, first day of school, I got a good report from my son Riley. He's at high school, very excited. He's one of Lincoln leaders, so they were helping him freshen around, a lot of excitement there, and I tell you what, he was so happy to be back at school in full capacity, and his teachers, you know, he's giving me a rundown of his teachers, and I know he's going to be challenged, which I like, a couple of classes he has, Mr. Walker in chemistry, and Mr. Bass in history, I'm glad, I very want to be challenged like that, and so I'm looking forward to a good year for him, and I just really kind of great to see that excitement. So I will say that I was able to go look at the bus when they were doing it, Mr. Hall headed at his house for the Construction Academy bus, and I know they were spending this Saturday afternoon over there with Harold Walker and that crew. I think it'd be a great idea if we were to continue to highlight that, and we were meeting, or having the bus here, kind of working workshop. I think that would be a great thing. Got a chance to work with Miss Stanley with Gucci River Electric Co-op and some of the funds that they had, and so they're working on some things there at the Canton High School, which is the school they serve. I was glad to hear that the generator issue got worked out. I know a lot of us were working behind the scenes for that, and that's good news for our schools, and really, I think for that part of the county right there, to have that size of a generator available. And so I'm glad that that worked out. A moment of silence, I know we got everybody, thank you, this is helpful for making sure that all took place. I never doubted that it wouldn't, so I think it's a great thing. You know what, I think we should have a moment of silence here at our board meeting, so I thought, I hope the chair wants to look at that, but you know, we could have a moment of silence. You know, and kind of reflect on what's being done in our schools. I would give to that, but I'll leave that up to the chair, I guess, right now.
I think so, I think we should put that in if everyone else, I think we do, something like that.
I always forget to call it. I think it's before, I think it's before, I think so, but we could check the protocol.
Yeah. And would I also like to have the construction group at the next, not board meeting, the next workshop?
Well, I think if, yes, if we can work that out, depending on, I don't know what's the agenda.
It's done.
Got it.
Okay. Here's what I'm saying.
Harold.
That's good. We need to, what do I want to say, too? Reading all the stuff we have the last few weeks nationally and all, and you get a little upset, and every time I do, I like to think of all of y'all, because every single person of this board, your first priority, always and forever, is the student. And so let them argue about, they want mashed potatoes, whatever, our first priority is the student, so thank you for that.
And my last one falls in line, falls in line with that, with priority and student. I was a little bit disappointed hearing today, I was talking to Mr. Bishop, that we're not going to have a chance for a kid to buy a ticket at a sporting event, that they have to do it, that they have to have a smartphone, they have to have a credit card. I think about our middle school kids that we have out there, that, you know, it's going to be tough for their parents to be able to get them to a volleyball game, or a basketball game, football game, having these other counties come, and I just really think we're not, you know, we've got a contingency of grandparents, too, that like to come to sporting events, and I just think we're going the wrong way with just requiring online illegal tickets, so I just want to say that.
And I will add, too, that up here with this board, all of whom are fans of different sports, and I'll make sure as many people can get to those sports as possible. I said it the last time, I'll say it this time, so maybe we'll revisit that and find a way to do it.
Swimming did win more medals than any of us, but we're just saying.
And more, seven more high school students. Oh. And he looks like, yeah. I think Ms. Hemel has something to say. Always. About swimming?
No, ma'am. You don't want me to go there today, but I would like Ms. Stanley to come up and give you all an update on where we are with construction classes that'll be implemented next year, because I know she's worked with Harold and some of the other companies throughout the community, with some of our electrical companies, some of our plumbing companies, and talking to them about needs that they're seeing that they need when the kids graduate, so if we take a couple of minutes and let her just give you a summary or a quick update, is that okay?
Absolutely.
It's my pleasure to be here to share a little bit with you. We actually have a, I would be happy to bring Ms. Mason back at a different time, if you want, like, for us to come at a workshop and discuss it with you. We've talked about the different courses that are offered throughout the state of Florida at some of the construction academies, and the different industry certifications that are offered at those, at the different schools in the state of Florida. So we're modeling after existing construction academies. We've reached out to some of the businesses in town to think about how we want to set this up. The first year, there would not be a lot of hands-on, it would be a lot of bookwork initially, but then we would be working towards like a four-year program, where our goal to be juniors or seniors would actually go possibly or potentially like they do when other districts, and work on a Habitat for Humanity home. So we had a large, like a four-year plan that I would be happy to share with you. We have a nice flyer that I, I was trying to get on my phone, and I couldn't pull it up, but, so I would be happy to come back and bring Ms. Mason and discuss with you what our plans are. We have a four-year plan, the industry certifications that go with each one of those, as well as partnering with different businesses in the community to help build workstations or stations within a certain area where they're going to house it at Citrus High School, and they would be possibly like a station for plumbing, and what they're going to need to do in order to partner with them, what would we need to purchase, what possibly would they be willing to donate for us, so that those students at the end of that semester or the year will be able to take an industry certification, which would earn them C A P funding, which could go back into their program, but also earn acceleration for the high school. So there's a lot of different moving parts, but it's a very positive program going forward that we will, that we would love to come and share with you, and get your input, and to let you know, you know, what we're moving towards. I have a meeting set up with Ms. Mason in the month of September, going through the very beginning of the school year, and we already met with Mr. Walker, Mr. Kennedy, as well as I had been out to the construction meeting they have out at the, is it the building?
Village Center.
Yes, I went to one of their meetings, I think it was in April, and we visited another school and over in Lake County, and with a business over there, and they got a large grant, and they kind of gave us some ideas of, they didn't think, it doesn't need to be like shop, it needs to be like hands-on, those type of things where the kids are learning on the job, what are they going to do, and then for us to partner with the local businesses to see if our students graduate with these industry certifications, what incentive or what, is there something that we can do to help them become employed here locally, and possibly, can we pay them a little bit extra for earning those certifications? So we have a lot planned, and we would love to come before you on a workshop, have a little PowerPoint for you and the flyer, and to share all of the wonderful things that are coming.
Ms. Stanley, I'm so grateful for the work you've been doing. You, you know, for those people who don't know, we have 140 separate certification programs in our district, 75 different specific industry certifications that cover 28 different pathways. And we really believe that certifications and getting those job opportunities and those real-world experience and learning in our high schools is so valuable, not just to our kids that are not going to go to college, but actually to our kids that are going to college, too, because what we're finding is they are actually more employable and more apt to have, want to get hired or have a higher income, when they have industry certifications that even go with their job, with their degrees that they have. You have been just so fabulous. Everything that we look to do, from our E M T programs, from our health academies, and just on and on, so I'm grateful to the work that you do, Ms. Mason.
Thank you very much.
One little reminder, because this is going to be new to us.
Yes, ma'am.
But in the past couple of years, we've been successful with D O E in recognizing certifications in lieu of state testing, so could we make sure that we, if some of these certifications that the kids get might count for their M A P test or something like that?
There, that's a whole nother story, but yes, ma'am, we are definitely.
Ms. Chance, we've been lobbying that for now, just about 10 years.
I know.
And we're trying.
Yes, we're trying, but we're getting close. Yes, ma'am, we certainly are.
As this new step comes in, let's check those certifications, see if they can be concordant scores.
Yeah, right now, none of them, we have appealed to D O E, none of them are concordant scores to meet the Algebra I requirement for the E S D.
That is 10 years he's been working on that.
When we teach a child how to frame a door and hang it in a brand-new house, he should be able to get a concordant score. They measure to the 116 to 136 to inch.
And one of the things, I'm sorry to interrupt you, one of the things they talked about over when we went and visited Lake, in Lake County at the Habitat for Humanity home, is the fact that they partnered with the school to ensure that those students came on the job site as seniors with the necessary skills in order to, as you say, measure within a quarter of an inch, so they have to be able to not just think about fractions, but be able to utilize them on a regular basis, and we are, we are really looking forward to what can come in the future. Industry certification is a win-win. It's wonderful for the student, it's wonderful for the school, and it's wonderful for the district. It truly is. It gives students an opportunity, possibly, to do something if the student got a drafting certification A D day at Citrus High School or Crestor High School, they can go on in college possibly, or wherever they are going to go on, whether it's a community college or even the service, and possibly work part-time in that area while they're going on to do whatever they want to do. It gives them an opportunity, if they get a C N A, it gives them an opportunity to do that, so that they can be gainfully employed while they're going out into the future to do whatever else they want to do. And Mr. Kennedy, you talked about the Health Science Academy, and we have been partnering with the local hospitals now to see that they're willing to pay for certain education for certain students. It is really, the emphasis on C T E in the state of Florida now is exciting, and we in Citrus County, with all of your support, the support of Ms. Hemel, is really, truly in the forefront, and I am excited for what the future holds.
Our, you know, E M Ts, Sumter County is paying for a starting E M T, a $6,000 bonus if you get on and sign with them.
And let me just tell you, we will be starting E K G at Crestor, at Crestor High School this year as well, that's a brand-new program. So they will be with the E M T, now we will be doing E K G. So that is a program that we're starting in January. We're in the process of purchasing the curriculum and providing the training for Ms. Shane, who's the nurse over there, who teaches in that department, but there's just a lot of wonderful things.
And you know, what we attempted to do at W T C Trades Academy was really a good thing, I mean, we couldn't get the students to come to, but when you look at a high school academy, our students are there.
Absolutely.
So we can have that kind of academy at Citrus High School, and if we can have the excitement like they brought with Health Academy, with Computer Science Academy, build that into the offerings, it's an opportunity for students, so I'm really excited about that, and I too appreciate the work that you do.
Yeah, and I had a discussion, the reason I think we're going to be successful, I had a discussion with George Russo of Habitat for Humanity, I think about a year ago, maybe even over a year ago, and our W T C, our kids were too old and they were already hired, so if we get them, you know, starting in the ninth grade and then teach them, and get their certifications, then they'll be ready to go.
Yes, and it's, I think it's just, how can it, how can that be a bad thing when we're working with Habitat for Humanity to work in the community to provide housing for our local people? I mean, it's just, it's a wonderful situation. They've blocked two blocks together, the students, they would bus them out on-site, bring them, they would work, and then take them back to the school, but that's something in the future, you have to understand, we've got to build the capacity within the program, but in three to four years, think about the wonderful things that could be happening with that.
We're just fortunate that George has enough lots to keep us going for a long time.
We have a lot, we have over 300.
Yes, ma'am. Well, thank you so much, I appreciate your confidence in mine and myself in the C T E department, and we are, I'm honored to continue forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you. And at 5:00, we have a public hearing on the Code of Student Conduct, but until then, we're going to.
I was just going to say thank you to everybody, Ms. Stanley, every, Ms. Swain, Ms. Fresh, everybody that works here does an excellent job, and it shows in our classroom. Our children know this, okay? Thank you.
Wes, did you want to say something?
I will.
Okay, so we're going to, what do you say, what I want? We're going to.
Recession?
Recession, thank you. We're going to. Recession, thank you. We're going to recess for 10 minutes and then we'll be back and then a public hearing on the Code of Conduct, so. Yeah, I'd like to go ahead and get one.
Can we close the public hearing and we'll reopen the regular meeting if anybody wants to speak.
Okay. We're so glad we have Wes with us, so we're opening the public meeting.
Public hearing.
There, excuse me. And this is about the Code of Student Conduct. And what we're to do is to approve the Code of Student Conduct.
And I'll go ahead and make the motion that we approve the 2021-2022 Code of Student Conduct.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Ms. Count, to approve the 2021-2022 Code of Student Conduct. That's.
Yeah, I had sort of with Mr. Bradshaw about, I suppose, the typo or whatever, did he pick up on the eligibility for that to change in January? Will he get that in here?
There's a date that's wrong as far as eligibility, as far as we can start, stop those. So I might suggest that we approve this, and reopen the regular meeting, we can ask to move to advertise the Amendment to Student Code of Conduct, and just to change that date and advertise it 2020, whatever date that is.
Okay, so we can go ahead and vote just, just.
Do you approve the Student Code of Conduct? That's the only thing that needs to be changed in there right now, or that needs to be approved so that it can go out to the students?
Okay.
I had a, I had a question, but should we ask for public comment too first? Because I think we have to ask for public comment.
Anyone in the public would like to comment opposed to the Code of Student Conduct? This is the one through Charles, right?
Yes ma'am.
Anyone in the public would like to comment opposed to the Code of Student Conduct? Last call for comments on the Code of Student Conduct. Since there's none, then we'll go ahead and vote.
That's just a question.
Yes.
Ms. Himmel, for example, with these change, with, if we do do an amendment, we're now digital, we're not print, if I recall, with the Code of Conduct, so we can make that.
We can run it to numbers.
Just a limited number. But so we can then, we can make those adjustments and then we'll get pushed out to the students with those, if we do later amend the Code of Conduct.
They can do it digitally, but the, the printed copies will have what is the update for the eligibility?
Thank you.
Okay, let's whip it and vote. Paul and Feder.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carries five zero. Now we need to close the public hearing and then we're going back to be able to make the adjustments.
And I'm not sure, what's the date, Mr.?
July 1st, it's, it's September 1st, if you're considering. The representative's assembly of the H S A, so if the charge of violence, the type of injury, which was due to a student who was immediately denied prior to July 1st, shall be considered as a non-Code of Conduct. It says, age on the 19 years old or under 47, first of the year. I'll just ask someone to make a motion to approve our Habitat Amendment to the Code of Student Conduct, and change that to the date for September 1st to July 1st, to allow that H S A. All right, I'll make that motion, we can change that date to comply with the H S A.
It was lifted by Mr. Dodd, seconded by Ryan. And would you restate what you just said?
Yes, that we, we reflect the correct date of eligibility, 19-years-old, the 19-years-old on, for July 1st.
Any other comments? Paul and Feder?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carries five zero, thank you.
Public comment then.
Has anyone got a voting button? Can we, can you use the voting button?
Sure. Okay, is that better?
Oh, that's, wow.
Yeah, after I was putting it back down my throat.
Hello. I have no control over this.
Okay, where are we now, Wes?
You can do public comment until 5:15 if you'd like.
Okay.
Ms. Barris, if you have any green cards, you can call them up.
Uh, no, we don't, no.
No, we didn't.
Sorry.
She did, she was.
Thomaselli.
Thomaselli, Nancy Thomaselli. You're speaking to the mask prohibition?
Thank you for inviting me to speak. I invited myself, actually. And I want to tell you how much I appreciated the meeting, it just reinforced in my mind the value of the work that you all do. I want you to know how much I appreciate every school teacher in the country. But I'm here because I have to disagree with the decision that you've made on mask mandates. I have three children in the school system of Florida. One is immunocompromised, and I'm very concerned about their safety. One stayed home last year because her brother was immunocompromised. Fortunately, she did well, she made the I B program she just started today. My grandson had to be home because of his Crohn's. He finished up high school at home, and he finished also two years at the Associated Anthrop College. He'll be starting in Tampa. But I am still concerned because they're all in the school system. I know that people infected the Delta. The virus carries viral load 1,000 times higher than previous strains. The Delta variant also has a short incubation period. It spreads through droplets and aerosols which hang longer in the air. It is expelled into the air by coughing, sneezing, talking, shouting, and singing, something children do all the time. Even vaccinated persons can spread the virus. Consequently, the Delta virus is more contagious and severe with potential after effects. Florida now has the highest number of hospitalizations to date with COVID and 1-5 with COVID in the nation, apart from Florida. It should be forced, as I see it, as one of two choices. Universal indoor masking, recommended by CDC as a epidemiologist, prevents spread. Not wearing masks, the virus can spread exponentially, especially when unvaccinated. It's a roll of the dice, and it is not a logic-based decision. One anti-mask mother said, "You have the right to mask your child. I have the right to unmask my child." But no, this is not an equal choice. Universal masking protects all persons. Non-masking potentially infects all persons. This is a medical issue, not a political issue, yet children are being politicized. This is a concerted effort to create and maintain systems that put children at risk. To enforce this, the government threatens withhold funding from schools, it threatens withhold salaries, and it had the Florida Department of Health and Education publish rules to protect parents' rights, and now it's gone. So my question is, who is protecting children's rights? Do parents have the right to harm their children, even if they make decisions due to lack of knowledge or for political reasons? Do they have the right to then harm other children by their decision? Unmasked children will infect other children. We expect those we put in power to work for our common good. Is it normal for a person to willingly allow children to be in harm's way? Is it normal for a person to put his political agenda before the safety of children's lives?
You're about, you've gone a little bit past the time you're allowed, so would you wrap up for the comments?
Sure. Thank you. Why would we follow the agenda of a person who will risk the lives of children for political reach for power? Why would we consent to this? I am asking the school board to stand up, not for our governor's rights, not for parents' rights, but for the rights of our children to have the safe environment that will keep them alive and do everything possible to protect them from an extremely contagious, potentially fatal illness by implementing universal mask mandates. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments and your opinion. Next person, Victoria. Why do you have an S M I C?
I said U S M I T.
I know, it's an I C, pretty often.
You show your mandate for not a riot.
Exactly.
Good evening, school board members and chair and.
Your attendance.
I'm here, Victoria Smith, Citrus County Education Association President, and I want to talk about the COVID emergency sick leave. As you are aware, we had that and it went through December of last year, and then you were gracious enough to extend it. This year, of course, we do not have it again, and we have already teachers and staff that are out on COVID. And this ensures that if we have this in place, this emergency sick leave, that the staff, if they get it from work, they do not have to take their personal sick leave. As you know, we only have so many, and we need those also for when we're sick besides just COVID, when we get the COVID from the work. So we're hoping that perhaps you'll do it just like you did last time and extend that again. I will tell you that Marion County right now has extended it, and Hernan County is in discussion on doing it as well. The other thing I, the other thing I want to talk about is we have questions on our COVID tree, the decision tree for teachers and staff when they have COVID or are in contact. Now, I'm not going to get into all of it, of course, but, and I, I will tell you, Mr. Ballmer and Ms. Himmel have been very good about getting back whenever I have a question. So they've been really good on that, but I don't, Ms. Himmel probably was not at her computer today when I was having these questions. So I just want you to be aware of there, since I have questions and I'm also getting questions from other staff members, perhaps maybe there should be, I don't know, something done where we can have more insight of what exactly this means. Because if you look at, number one, staff is a contact to a positive COVID-19 individual. If you're asymptomatic, then you have to return to work after 10 days and you have to get a clearance letter. I don't know what a clearance letter is. If you're symptomatic, then you go to section two. Well, section two is if you have one symptom in Group A or two or more in Group B, then you return to work if there's no fever after 24 hours. So there's a lot of confusion there, because if you're asymptomatic, you have to wait that 10 days, even though you don't have any symptoms. But if you are symptomatic, you have to go to step two, and then you can come back to work after, without medication for 24 hours, as long as you don't have a fever. So there's confusion there. And of course, what do we want? We want our teachers in classroom, we want our staff at work. So I'm just hoping maybe there could be some, I don't know, give us some more answers on that, as well as a student can come back to school with a rapid test, but a staff member cannot, they cannot have a rapid test. So there also is some questions. I know my time's almost out, so I'm not going to speak anymore on that, but I would like just a couple of personal things to say, and that is, it was wonderful to see Ms. Himmel's granddaughter here, because I remember, remember, I used to bring my grandchildren here when they were very little, so it was very cool to see. And then also to thank you for doing the construction and the Plumbing Academy and everything, that is awesome, I appreciate that you guys are doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll correct the spelling up here. Are there any others who wish to speak?
Just Ms. Powers. I, and I don't know if maybe Ms. Himmel is able to address it now, but am I correct that the D O E's recent new ruling, which does have some definitive return to school protocols, that they apply, as they apply to students, will that be also applied to staff members? And I know that may not even be a decision that we have within our authority, it has to do usually with D O H's recommendations.
At this time, the Department of Health is following the CDC guidelines, and those are, they are not the same for adults and students.
So the governor's order only then is directive to the D O H for students, and then there's a different protocol now that, that D O H is using, which would be following CDC, which is, is a, it is, I think it's a little more extensive than what now as the students are. For example, the students can take a test, and I believe under circumstances, return back to school.
They can, it's, the, that process is the same, it's the amount of time for when a student can test and be asymptomatic and have a negative test, when they can return to school if they've been a contact, as opposed to a staff member. It's a day difference.
Okay, so it's a day difference?
A student is after day four, a staff member is after day five, or an adult. I mean, it's not just school, but yes, an adult.
And that may be something we want to talk to our legislative team about too, because that hasn't had to do with, again, with I think your decision or the district's, it has to do with what D O H is telling us from the CDC.
Absolutely. And all the information that we're sharing is from the Department of Health, who, or actually the Department of Education, who, you know, is getting information from the Department of Health under the CDC guidelines.
Thank you, Ms. Himmel.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak? Mr. Dodd, no? Anyone in the audience? Okay.
I did, I did talk to Ms. Dodd about this earlier, but that's not on the record, I think I did it on the record.
Okay.
That is a warning to you, that if you're going to get digital educational material, it can be infected with subliminal stuff. That's just funny, digital stuff, but it can be. You need to find some way to independently verify that it is not.
Okay.
I don't know how that's to be done, but there are those who can do it, I know that. You look into it, and the government certainly, but look at it, see that there's hidden stuff in there, okay? There's stuff that can be subliminal by virtue of auditory, it's something that one gets through, subliminal, as it's said. And certainly the visual stuff. This, this digital information is coming out visually easily, they can flash messages out there. Once the kids can read them, you know, if they can't, pictures tell over a thousand words. So I think that should be, if you're going to put money into it and be using it all the time, you don't want your kids influenced, but at least that's it.
Well, thank you for bringing that up. Ask Mr. Bradshaw to look into this. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Mr. Bradshaw?
No ma'am.
Yeah, so are you ready to adjourn?
Yes ma'am. You are.
You've always stood me, okay. Okay, the meeting stands adjourned.